That was, the voice was last night.
Good morning. And welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Ponte Gorda City Council. Please let the record reflect that council members are here except for Councilmember Kiesling. All other state officials are present. We will now stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask thy continued help and understanding in our council decision to make today. Grant us, Lord, not to be anxious about earthly things, but to love things heavenly. And even now, while we are placed among things that seem to be passing away, to hold fast to those that shall endure. We ask that you give us the wisdom to make the right and proper decision and to hold in the palm of your hands. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. We have several presentations this morning, and the first one that I'm going to do is the Sea Level Rise presentation. Two weeks ago, I had an opportunity with our urban planner, Joan LeBeau, to attend the 2015 Southwest Florida Sea Level Rise Summit. It was held at Florida Gulf Coast University. It was hosted by the Florida Coastal and Ocean Coalition, as well as the League of Women Voters of Lee County. Ponte Gorda, like many other coastal communities, is vulnerable to sea rise and storm surge, and cities and counties throughout South Florida are just now gearing up in preparation. Ponte Gorda has been working on it since 2009. The summit provided a greater understanding and a resolve to address the impacts of sea level rise, the legal issues surrounding those impacts, as well as offered proactive solutions to address rising tides. I was most honored, on behalf of our city, to accept an award, recognizing Ponte Gorda's leadership and vision in adopting the Adaptation Plan to address climate change. In addition to receiving this award, there were a number of speakers who touted Ponte Gorda as being progressive in our planning for climate change, and that we were one of the first cities to do so. And again, it's many thanks to our staff and who kept this and previous councils on our toes to ensure that we continue to address climate change. It's important to know that this plan was developed with our community to help identify the vulnerability areas and write the plan, which now serves as a model to other communities in Florida, elsewhere in the U.S., as well as other parts of the world, including the Netherlands and Indonesia. How do you like that? Our plan, our little city has done this. So you might ask, well, what have we done? Well, we have successfully implemented six of our seven climate vulnerabilities. Sea grass protection and restoration. We do have local fertilizer ordinances, zero scapeing and native plant landscaping, mangrove mitigation along our fringe areas. You may recall our oyster restoration project with Chenep, promoting our green building alternatives, and incorporating into our comprehensive plan those areas that will retain natural shorelines. Of course, we've partnered with a number of groups, whether it's the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council with Chenep, Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, Florida Sea Grant, our MPO, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Transportation, Department of Economic Opportunity. We have worked with an awful lot of groups, and we continue to promote our model throughout the country. It again is evidence that Ponte Gorda is taking the lead. But it is again due in large part because of our staff, who help us continue to be proactive in planning and to design our environment for all of us, which supports our retail, our tourism, and our natural resource economy. So thank you to our staff, all of you. You've done a great job, and again, we have our plaque. Our next presentation is going to be for our 2015 Arbor Day presentation, our Tree Academy poster contest. Who's here, Joan?
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. And Mitchell, will you have Karen put on the slide? This is the wrap-up to our 2015 Arbor Day program. And it just culminates probably six months of efforts on staff's part and the volunteer that we work with. So we want to thank all of them right from the get-go. Without them, we would not be able to handle this program. Next slide, Mitchell? First, we'd like to thank our sponsors who participate with us. We work with Mosaic and the Florida Forest Service. And again, their contribution really gives us that ability to do the amount of programming that we do with the community. Next slide. This is our 21st Arbor Day celebration, and it was held the last Friday of the month in April. It is always that day. Jay Sterling Morton began this tradition, and we carry it through. We work with three elementary schools. We totaled over 380 students this year, include parents, chaperones, teachers, and the 50 volunteers that helped put the program on, plus all the stations that were manned by the variety of city services, as well as Mosaic, the Florida Forest Service, the police, all of those that participated. It's a great day. If you ever get a chance to attend, please do so. Next slide. This is just a little viewing of the work that gets done. The students are grouped, and they move through the stations rather quickly. It's only like six minutes per station. Their retention span is slightly limited, but they do a great, each group centers on one aspect of a tree. So whether it's tree protection, tree planting, a story about a tree, how tree roots affect the infrastructure, all of those little things get taught to the students as they walk through what we call the knowledge trail. Next slide. The program is well-known throughout the area. We were even asked from Meadow Park School across the river if they could join us. Well, with 380 students plus an additional 100-plus students from kindergarten, we opted to do a special program for them, and we've changed that program and created an Arbor Day and Earth Day program that we work with, the Meadow Park School. They have 102 students, we had 15 volunteers, and we did it at the school location this year rather than out in the, out on Lashley Park due to the rains. But it was a great program. Next slide. And the kids got to see quite a variety of things. We had, we worked with Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, and then our staff members, the children were able to do some hands-on programs, putting their fingerprints on a, on a poster, and we created trees, the handprints were the leaves. So it was well-received by that, that group. Next slide. And then this brings us to our Tree Academy. This is an award-winning program, and we work with Sally Jones exclusively. It is the only elementary school that we deal with. There are four 5th grade classes, 78 students participated this year. We have about 20 hours of actual teaching time, and then there's additional time that we have with the schools on preparation and things of that nature. This year, we had 68 posters, and our recipients are in the audience today. They're very excited to receive their awards. The theme this year was, "The Trees Are Terrific in Cities and Towns," and the posters that are presented on the back wall were the students' vision of what they thought that meant. After a selection process, the top three winners were awarded, well, were chosen, and then there were 10 honorable mentions. In addition to that program, we also partner with the Downtown Merchants Association. This is relatively new, it's our second year doing it. We display the students' artwork at Gallery Walk, and this, last year was our first time we ran it. We only had about 65 people who voted, and we thought that that was just due to the weather. This year, we had over 170 people vote on the poster. So the winner of that award is going to be presented by Jerry Purcellar, if Jerry will come up. He's the president of the Downtown Merchants Association.
Good morning, Jerry Purcellar, President of the Downtown Merchants Association. And the people of Ponte Gorda have voted, and we have a People's Choice Award. Several hundred people voted at Gallery Walk. And we are proud to say that we are going to award Alexis. I'm sorry, Alexandra. Would you come up here, please? That's yours.
Wait a minute.
We have 50 DMA bucks for you, and on the back of this $5 buck is a list of merchants where you can spend all your money. So congratulations.
And we want to thank the Downtown Merchants and Alexandra for such great work, and it's just a great partnership. We'll be doing it annually, as far as I know. So next April, we'll expect to see maybe 300 people down there voting on it. All right, now, for the grand finale, we go to our winners of the poster contest. And the third-place winner, Mitchell, next slide, is... We'll have the mayor present these to the students, so if the students, when I call your name, will come up to the center for your photos. And the winner is, next slide, Cash Stover, third place. Cash wins a $60 Visa card. And the Visa card does have his poster on it, so, in addition to the certificate. Thank you, Cash. Our second-place winner will receive a $75 Visa card, where she can, they can use anywhere. And the winner of that award is Beatrice Delacruz. And then our first-place winner, the People's Choice Award winner, and the first-place winner for the sixth annual Arbor Day poster contest, is Alexandra Vega. In addition to the $50 bucks awards that she received from the Downtown Merchants Association, she receives a $100 gift card. And then her certificate. Thank you, Mayor. Just to wrap it up, we want to thank our city council for allowing us to continue these programs in the community. We do believe it really makes a difference. We want to thank our sponsors again, Mosaic and the Florida Forest Service, for their continued support. We thank the teachers for allowing us to continue to come into their classrooms, because there are days where we wreak a little havoc on their schedule, but it is all a good, all in good fun. And a special thank you to the students. Their discussions this year were unbelievable. I've been doing it now for six years, and there were questions we hadn't heard yet, and it was amazing that they were thinking that far ahead. And then last but not least, we thank all of the volunteers. Without them, it really would not be a program, because the hours that go into running this is amazing. And we invite all of you for next year, save the date, Friday, April 29th, and 2016, for the 22nd Arbor Day celebration. If we could have all of the winners step outside, we'll take you up for the, your photos around the Arbor Day wall. Thank you very much.
Patty needs her regular chair. Thank you all, thank you. Patty, I didn't know you were here. And now we have another recognition. Howard?
We have, not very often we get to do these, but we have a 30-year service award. Now, the plaque says Charles Paget. We refer to him as Senior, even though his name is Steve Paget. So, project manager from Public Works, a lot of the projects that get done, he's on top of it. Come on up, Steve.
Morning, Mark Earring, Steve Supervisor, Engineering Manager. I met Steve in the early 90s, '92, when I worked for Charlotte County, and he put an impression on me. Over the next 15 years, I worked with Steve on various projects as a civil engineer, doing private projects within the city. Eight years ago, when I got the opportunity to come to work for, or to interview with City of Ponte Gorda, Steve played a big decision, big part of that decision in coming to work for him. I respected what he had done. He was tough but fair in all my dealings with him, and I was excited to come to work here eight years ago, and I thank him for that, and we're glad to have him around. He says he's going to stick around for another year. We're trying to convince him a little longer, but...
30 years, maybe?
Good morning. Thank you for the recognition. I'd like to thank the city council for this. Also, it's good to see our Public Works staff here. In the 30, 30 years I've been here, I've seen a lot happening in Ponte Gorda, which is good, and I'm sure that years to come, it'll, it'll be even better. So, and my wife's in the audience, and she and I live here in Ponte Gorda, and Ponte Gorda will be our home. So, thank you very much, and yes, I will be here one more year.
Our next recognition is for Howard Koenig. For the past 10 years, Howard has served as our city manager, as well as our CRA, you want to give it to yourself? As well as our CRA Executive Director. And he will be the first to tell you that he does not deserve the recognition. I mean, it's only 10 years, it's not like 30 years like Steve. But when I asked him why, you know, what he would identify as his highlight over the past 10 years, he responded, "Coming here." And he is also proud of our strategic plan, which was initiated under his guidance when he first came, and also rebuilding our town. Indeed, he came to Ponte Gorda a year after Hurricane Charlie hit, and has been the center of our city's revitalization. We've come a long way in those 10 years. Herald Court Center, Harbor Walk, Pathways, Mertz, Municipal Marina, our Mooring Field, SS Clearhead, our RO plant, second time around, should be a charm, downtown flooding mitigation. He's seen businesses come and go, and thankfully, more are coming than going these days. He's helped us bring our, bring us through our economic downturn with a city government that is open and transparent and financially stable. I'm not sure how many cities have a city manager who sends a weekly report, and not too many have a citizens academy. Of course, our city can also tout our community gardens, fitness zone, pickleball courts, bicycle owner programs, year-round lights in downtown, many, many festivals and events. We also have many best accolades, top 10 safest cities in Florida, the best places to live, best small town in America, best yachting town, among the top 15, among the top 10 places to sail, Bicycle Community of the Year, third-place best, best place to live and play golf, best fishing spot in the world, America's Best Healthy Places to Retire, and just recently was listed as one of the most affordable places to retire. And as I mentioned earlier, we're now recognized also as a leader in planning for climate change. He's been a champion for our city's economic development with Annexations, with Chaney Brothers, and helping us to recruit Western Michigan University. Obviously, Howard has not resurrected our city on his own, but working with our amazing staff and our many council members over the years, as well as our residents, businesses, and community organizations, he has helped create an amazing place where we all want to be. I am so proud of our city, and Howard Koenig has been the glue to ensure our city flourishes. He has been the glue to ensure we all focus on fulfilling our mission as a vibrant waterfront community, unique in character, character and history, and one of the most desirable places to live, work, and visit. Howard, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your friendship, thank you for your guidance. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I know, I know there are a couple of people who would like to say a few words, and probably fewer than mine, yeah.
Yeah, I could do that. It would, good morning. It would be nearly impossible, Howard, to overstate the accomplishments that you have made in the last 10 years. And your beliefs and motivation and empowerment have garnered you enormous amount of respect with the city staff. And because of the atmosphere you've created, the staff, the people who work here want to be part of Team Ponte Gorda. They come to work happily every day because of what you created. You've survived a lot of council members, and a lot of different personalities, challenging personalities, over the past 10 years. And as I've said to you many times, I strongly believe you have the patience of Job. I've seen you shave your head, spend a day on a garbage truck.
Dance like a chicken?
I've seen you dress like a turkey. And I've seen you lead numerous bicycle tours for residents and visitors. Truly, this is not a job for you, it's a passion. And I wish that you'd still be sitting in that seat 10 years from now, but I know that's not going to happen, but you've done an outstanding job. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Continued success, my friend.
Thank you.
Massey Lowman with Team Ponte Gorda. Howard, we started our journey together 10 years ago, when team was one year old. The current Citizens Master Plan and the Waterfront Master Plan provided guidance for the city. Without your support and direction to the team, none of the accomplishments and growth would have been possible. Thank you, and we look forward to working together in the future.
Thank you, thank you, Massey.
You know, you said a lot more than what I asked you to say.
I know, I know. I don't listen very well.
Really, it, when the mayor asked me, you know, what, what would be the first thing to come to mind about the accomplishments and what we're most proud of? Really, it's coming here, and it really has been a joy. I feel like I'm on, like I'm out the door here, but I'm not. We still have a lot more work to do. Thank everybody for being here. Some of our crew has been here for, since day one, and they're hanging in there. So, really, I do appreciate this, I really do. 10 years, it's not 30 years, like some other folks, it's not 25, 20, but thank you very much, really, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Howard, council may have set the course over the years, but you have steered the ship through some pretty turbulent water at times. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Nancy?
Yes, just coming from a community, community partner perspective, you enabled this community and encouraged an empowered environment, as somebody already mentioned. And that really is exemplified in the presentation that you did on the results through collaboration, the power of partnerships that's up on the city's website. That would not have all been possible had we not fostered that spirit of collaboration that's, that's really alive and well here, thanks to you.
Well, I will ditto what everyone else said, because it's all true, but I, when I came here in 1988, I've met a lot of city managers. You are the best city manager Ponte Gorda has ever had.
For sure.
We haven't gotten through the council meeting.
That's true.
At least, at least our former mayor and council member didn't drop a bomb on us this time.
Is the meeting over?
We will now have, yes, is there anything else? No. Introduction of board or committee member nominees, if you would like to introduce yourself. Thank you, sir. Thank you. No one wants to introduce themselves, or we will have...
No, hang on, hang on.
Oh, we do have someone, I'm sorry. I thought you were headed out the door, too.
Another crowd.
I agree, I agree, Howard, you, you've changed the city. I'm Bill Schindler, and I'm running for a seat on the Utilities Board, and hope you will support me.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else wish to introduce themselves? All right, then we will move into our public hearing agenda. We have one public hearing, ZA 0615.
Yes, and this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Ponte Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.7, in our neighborhood residential district, amending subsection B, permitted accessory uses in structures, adding clarification of provisions for structures accessory to residential uses, and deleting note regarding such accessory uses, structures, excuse me, amending Section 3.8, NC Neighborhood Center District, subsection G, Development Standards, item, adding item 15, providing for development standards for single-family structures and accessory structures in the neighborhood center district, amending Section 3.9, CC City Center District, subsection G, Development Standards, adding item 12, providing for development standards for single-family structures and accessory structures in the city-centered district, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
All right, this is a first reading. Terry?
Good morning, for the record, excuse me, Terry Tab, zoning official. This, we did discuss previously with council, discussed with planning commission. Planning commission did review the first reading and has recommended approval, as well as city staff, and if you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? No?
I just have one. Terry, how did we arrive at the, the square foot of a, the garage being, can be built up to half of the area of the house? What's the principle behind that?
Well, you've got a primary use and accessory use. Accessory use is always lesser in size, as well as impact on a property. And during the development of the code, it was determined that rather than, you know, having more accessory structures than you have of primary structures to limit the total overall footprint of the accessory structures.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So you can only have one accessory structure?
No, you could have multiple, but the cumulative area of them can be no more than one-half of the total square foot of the primary structure. It does exclude pools and patios. Those don't count against them.
And it will be built to, you know, design standards or whatever?
Yes.
It's not like going to Home Depot and sticking in it.
Is that correct?
Yes.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ZA 0615, please come forward. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? Last call?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval, ZA 0615.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, ZA 0615. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Thank you. We now have a quasi-judicial public hearing.
Yes, as a quasi-judicial public hearing, all testimony and evidence will need to be sworn, so anyone who is going to be presenting any testimony or evidence with respect to this public hearing, please rise to be sworn by the court at this time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and when you come to the podium to testify, please state your full name and indicate you've been sworn.
This is V-01-15, a request for a variance to the Land Development Regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10, Ponte Gorda Code, to allow a new swimming pool, which is under construction, to have a rear yard setback of 19.51 feet at the closest point instead of 20 feet, as required per Section 26, in Chapter 26, Section 3... instead of 20 feet as required per Section 26, in Chapter 26, Section 3.13D Punta Gorda Code, and to allow a screen enclosure to be constructed on the pool wall with a rear yard setback of 19.51 feet instead of 20 feet as required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D Punta Gorda Code. The location is 3213 Antigua Drive, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tab, zoning official, and I have been sworn. Staff received this request as a result of the owner of Nautilus Pool did come into my office and indicated that he thought he had a problem with a pool under construction. When the construction plans were submitted due to the radius and the back of the lot, the pool, you could see that the wall would have needed to been kind of angled in in order to maintain the 20-foot setback. What we ended up with, on the detailed plan provided, was we ended up with the 19.51 rear yard setback instead of the required 20-foot setback. If this was an existing structure that had been constructed more than three years ago and was changing ownership, this would be an administrative variance process because it wouldn't have been caught at, during construction, and it would not require the public hearing process. In 2007, the code was amended to require all contractors to submit location surveys to ensure that mistakes were not made during construction, or if they were made, they could be caught at an early stage when they were more easily corrected, as opposed to just automatically granting variances, which, I mean, it does put, you know, a small cloud on the title. You know, it's always, it's tied to the land as long as that structure's there. But staff felt that to protect the property owners, that the construction should be done according to the development standards without the deviations. That, that began in 2007. Contractors were made aware of it, as well as the removal of the ability to apply for administrative variance. With variances, there are specific criteria that the applicant does have to show that they meet. Within those, the condition of the property, the applicant states the radius in the back of the lot created the issue for them. However, as we saw with the proposed plans, they were well aware that that existed. And when you look at aerials of any area within Punta Gorda Isles, there are many arcs, there are many radiuses. It's not an uncommon condition of land within that district. The applicant states that cutting part of the pool wall out to make it into compliance with the development standards would create future leakage for the pool due to a cold seam, or cold joint. However, no structural engineers' report was submitted to support that statement, so staff does not have anything to support that. One of the criteria that, the conditions regarding the land or the size or characteristics is not applicable to other lands. Staff could not find that to be true because the same conditions exist in numerous locations. The, whether this creates undue hardship on the applicant or mere inconvenience, staff's finding is that it is not an undue hardship as it was avoidable by having the survey done prior to spray creating the wall. Failure to submit the survey puts the contractor at risk for any work performed without the survey. So, staff did find no hardship. That the granting of the variance would not be interest to incompatible with contiguous uses the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. Granting of the variance would defeat the purpose of instituting the requirement for the location surveys. If contractors find that all they have to do is apply for a variance and get the granted variance, then the due care that they have been showing over the last several years since this has been instituted could go right out the window. The intent of the ordinances was to catch these early in construction so that they were not expensive to correct. It is the minimum modification requested to afford the relief. Staff, staff's finding is that the requested variance was created by the pool contractor and not the property owner. And when he chose not to have the measurement done, well, it could easily be corrected. Staff finds that the application does not meet the criteria required for variance. However, the Board of Zoning Appeals did unanimously, unanimously recommend approval of the requested variance. However, staff still recommends denial.
Thank you. Questions? Tom?
Terry, how frequently is this type of survey that was deleted from this process, does that occur frequently, or is this just a one-of-a-kind instance where this particular survey was not included?
Pools, the, the type of pools that are constructed, location surveys, we get them daily. Contractors turn them in regularly. Usually, it's a stem wall.
Normal course. They typically come in with, with a project.
And normally, it is a stem wall survey, and... In this instance, we got a stem wall location survey as far as the stem wall went. However, the type of construction for this particular pool, the remainder of the pool wall is a spray crete wall. And the way the building official explained it to me is that they put a wire frame up with kind of a black, it's a bendable board, the way he described it. And it's literally spray created in place, so it's not a concrete block stem wall. It's a spray crete wall. Pete could probably explain it way better than that, but that's how it was explained to me. So, that's why the survey did not show the location of this until after it was in place.
What, and what is the thickness of that, that spray, that spray wall as opposed to what, it might have been block if it wasn't spray creed? Is that...
It's, it is a pool design, and as, I mean, a concrete block, I believe, is approximately eight inches. I didn't measure the top of this wall as far as how deep it is. Structurally wise, you know, it would need to be somebody who's more versed on building codes to...
Terry, why did the Board of Zoning Appeals approve it against staff's recommendation?
I believe they felt that everybody is subject to errors. I mean, we're all human. We all do make mistakes. They, they felt that the cost of removing the pool and redoing it would be hardship for the contractor, and it was their determination then to...
And as I looked at the previous graph in terms of where the difference is, it appears to be a minimal amount. You said it's like a half foot off. Is that correct?
Yes, it's six inches.
And it doesn't happen across the entire thing? It is perhaps, what, a third of that pool?
Based on where they've marked this, the deviation begins here.
Okay, about halfway. Okay. Other comments, questions? Nancy?
Yeah, Terry, how often does something like this come up?
We have had some location surveys that showed stem walls that were not where they belonged. Contractor has removed them. We have had monolithic slabs, which are slabs ported grade, that the contractor chose to provide a builder's risk letter stating that they would correct the error if it was incorrect, and they have had to remove portions of monolithic slabs as well due to errors being made. Most, for the most part, the majority of them come in with correct setbacks, but we do, we have found several. We started finding them immediately after the ordinance was enacted.
Yeah, under full disclosure, I live in a house that, as Terry cited, that we had to go through a variance process when we purchased the home because it was, the pool was constructed in 1989, and it's three inches over. And so, the setback is 19 feet and .75. And, but that was done years and years and years ago. You know, in this case, and looking at this, and looking at, it's clear to me that this, they knew that there should be this curve. It's, it's just clear negligence.
Kim?
I agree.
Tom?
Well, you know, we're talking about six inches here. You know, I...
Yes, you may come up.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Pico Carroll, the contractor that we're...
And you were sworn.
Yes, I was. We're actually talking about six inches aligned as going down to, into finite to zero. It's a total of four square feet out of a property that's over 8,800 square feet. So, I'm just trying to get a little perspective on what we're actually asking for. The other thing is that this consideration that I'm asking for is the same thing that this city council has passed with other issues if the owner did it after the fact. The ordinance was changed, but it still doesn't give me the same equal balance footing as if the owner came in and we finished the project. This project has already gone through two of the three inspections on it. So, technically, we could have finished the project if I didn't bring this up to the board, and the owner could have came in here three months from now and pled economic hardship, and I, and then it would be up to the board to make that decision. So, I'm asking just for the same consideration here. The other thing is, we have, to answer the question about how often does this happen, I've been a contractor in the city for 26 years, and I have over 700 pools in the city. This has never happened, that I know of, with our company. So, that's the consideration I'm asking for.
Yes, Kim?
You knew that this was, that this needed to be angled?
Uh huh.
Why didn't it happen?
It actually is angled. If you look at it, it is angled. Unfortunately, it wasn't angled enough.
Okay.
That's where the issue came in.
Okay.
We knew it from the beginning. There was. At the time, I was having, you know, I was having some health issues, so I was not around much that month. So, that's kind of, you know, my fault. My supervisor and my staff should have been able to pick that up, but at the time, they weren't getting any major response from me on making it clear that, that had to be double-checked. So, apparently, somebody had a stake with a line, and the line wasn't in the proper place.
So, the design was to the specifications, the original design?
The original design was supposed to fit, but apparently, a line got moved. The other thing is, since then, you know, Terry and I talked also that we're more cosmic to the fact that we need to pay close attention to that, and also that the survey that gets turned in with the as-built needs to have all the lines connecting, and that was part of the other issue here. As you've seen, that survey did not have that line transcending around the rest of the area, and that was part of the problem. So, since then, we are turning in or having the surveyor, without a middle person touching any of these surveys, sending it as an email to the department with a hard copy to follow. So, we, I believe we have a better handle on it at this point.
Nancy?
Terry, is it true what has just been stated that, that the pool could have been finished and the residents could have come back without any of our processes? It seemed to me like what you had stated before was that there are processes in place that were not adhered...